... Especially the United States of America and to the public, we will say, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor? The meeting in violation of the Open Meetings Act.
We ask for, if anyone has any order, please. We ask for public comment. I'll question the comments as projected to your speaker again, three minutes to comment on topics on the agenda only. Our speaker will be allowed enough to speak. If you have something to do with this, come forward to the mic.
Mr. Mayor, a short while ago, you went at a meeting. You asked for a new ordinance. And we questioned it. As a reasoning for it, you assured us it was to be put on the books just in case. Less than a week later, you posted the agenda and had that on your foreign appointments. You've been working on dispatch since November with one particular group. And then you had three groups in here a week ago. Again, saying it's, you know, you're going to decide which one is the best. To us, it was all lies. In talking with one of the three dispatchers, they were notified the week before about a proposal. The one that you picked had been working on a proposal since November. This was an attempt to pacify the residents. And in doing so, you inconvenienced two dispatch services, Linwood and Buss, who weren't even in the equation. We asked about the contract for the new, the village manager, or whatever you want to call it. We asked about that. We asked about the contract and some of the things in the contract. It's my understanding that the trustees did not get a copy of the contract. The trustees weren't talked to about the dispatch service until tonight at your closed session. This is supposed to be transparency and being honest with the people. You have disappointed the residents, Mr. Mayor. You, you have suddenly taken away any confidence that we've had or any trust. And what's even more disturbing is the trustees that are going along with it without asking questions, without letting the villagers know that we, we put you in there and we don't like what's being done. This is a done deal. We knew it before we walked in here tonight. We have to accept that. There's nothing we can do about it. But we want you to know, you have really, really brought this town down to its knees. And you did it all by yourself.
All right, you know, first of all, I don't know where you got your information from. You must be getting it out there from somewhere. But the board has been worried what's been going on. We did have three presentations last week. We opened it up to the board. It's all about the best, what's the best price, what's the best presentation. It's up to the board tonight as it's on the agenda to approve one. So, again, when it comes to the dispatch center, there was a financial decision that, that cost this village. And, you know, again, I would encourage residents to reach out, talk to the governor. Put the information out there for residents to contact the governor. South Village is running through loans approximately, almost a million dollars a share in state revenue because of WGF. Those are funds that we have coming, that the governor's cutting because of grants that the governor has froze that now we have to make payments on. You know, and I've been going through this board for over a year now, asking for cost savings initiatives. I've even reached out to the residents for cost savings initiatives. And we reached out to the dispatch center prior to even bringing me a public hearing. We negotiated in faith with our dispatch centers to see if they could either meet or beat the cost savings. In the long run, it's about, if you look at the costs, it's about $300,000 first year. Comes out to be approximately $1.5 million within five years and it's over $3 million, over $3 million in 10 years. So, you know, we're facing some, some difficult decisions. And it was a very difficult decision, but in the long run, we'll find out tonight that we're able to come up with a 10th of, with our dispatchers. And the important thing is making sure that, you know, that we try to help them look for jobs and make sure we have some type of severance package for them. And then you'll find out tonight as we go on it, what we're going to do. Anyone else?
I'd like to know if it is in effect that the dispatchers will be dismissed by the end of the week? And also, I would like to know if that is the case, when was the vote taken by the board?
I can tell you that, you know, we're looking for an order retransition on April 30th. And at midnight of our new units, jobs will be over. At the same time, we're working with whoever, we will work with whoever gets the dispatch center dispatch center to see if we can get jobs for our employees working for whoever gets it. But the bargaining unit will end as of midnight, from 1:00 April 30th at midnight, if from 1:00 May 1st, 12:01 May 1st. All right, any other questions?
When was the vote taken on that, then?
Is there any vote tonight? Any other questions? If you have any questions, you can move on.
Jen Clark. How can we take a vote on something that is already decided after the fact? That's the number of questions tonight, Mr. Mayor.
And when you look at the cost savings, you have different dispatches to take. We worked with the union. And tonight, we have on the agenda to vote, so I'll hold my.
That it's already taken care of. You, you have taken it under your guidance, let me put it that way, and decided that you and Mr. Longhorn or Brodus, and possibly John Tony, that we don't need our own dispatchers. We need it from the outside. So let's get everything together and pull some other, other dispatching groups. We put on a little horse and pony show here last week and have them come out and give a display to whoever was in the audience. And then tonight, you pulled on what you already put in place. Tell me that's wrong.
Yeah, that's your opinion. And move to the next. Anyone else? All right, move to report some officers. Deputy Mayor's report. First thing we have is a bid opening. The bid's proposal for making the entire improvements is $466,320.55. It's $466,320.55. And that's from Deconstruction. Letter, letter D, Construction Eve, out of Coles City, Illinois. This one's from K-5 Construction, out of Lamont, Illinois. Entire improvements are $495,555.55. It's $495, I'm sorry, $495,555.55. And then that is K-5 Construction. Next one is Gallagher S-Walk, Althorne, Illinois. Tire improvements are $440,590.20. Next one is from Ericos, Ericoy's Paving Corporation, out of Washtis, Washtis. Tire improvements are $457,269.90. And that's Ericos. This is from G8 Paving LLC, from Delwood, Illinois. There's just a bunch of prices for everything, itemized. So that's the office of village engineers. Village engineers can provide the total cost. We provide the board with the breakdown. Deputy Mayor's report, Nancy. We're holding for a quick review of your report as well. All righty. The other thing we have is the dispatchers' report for the month of March. We have property taxes at $2,527,437.32. Other taxes of $236,425.82. Licenses and permits for $6,237. Fees and services for $252,249.8. Grants for $1,002.34. Transfers of $1,563,380.98. And miscellaneous of $85,776.56 for a total revenue of $4,672,590.10. And for that one, so let me go ahead. I got February's here also. So that was for the month of March. If we'll go backwards to February. Property taxes was $807,818.55. Other taxes, $147,072.42. Licenses and permits, $4,463. Fees and services of $228,899.32. Grants of $18,298.73. Transfers of $441,642.35. And miscellaneous of $224,314.3. Their total revenue during the month of Mar, oh, February, during the month of February That's March, February, February. Please make sure the trustees have a copy of your box. All right. Thank you. Move to those groups, um, study members.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There still is a list of addresses of your state representatives and your governor on the back table. Everybody is requested to write a letter to your legislators regarding the cuts that are going to be made in our budget if we don't rattle some cages and make some noise. I received two letters today that we'll be taking to hand, delivered to Springfield tomorrow. If there are others in the audience, please, we'll be happy to deliver them tomorrow. The man and I will be going to Springfield along with, I believe, Trustee Morton is also going. But you can write a letter to these representatives I wrote. And also, Strasburg School is requesting to do a tour of our buildings and facilities. I think they've reached out to the fire department on there and they want to tour the police department and the village hall. They're looking at May 21st and May 26th. I'm working on trying to set up if that's feasible with those departments. So if you guys could let me know, I believe the fire department, they're looking at the 21st and the police department's 26th. If those dates are good for you, please email me and let me know so I can tell you with the teacher at Strasburg. And finally, a public notice has been posted since last Friday regarding the budget hearing that we will be having here on May 5th at 6:00 PM. The hearing will take place on May 5th at 6:00 PM. Action should be taken at that same meeting to approve the budget. And village stickers do go on sale on May 1st. If anybody has any questions about that, the village stickers will go on sale May 1st. And this year, we do have the sticker that was designed by a seventh grader from Rickover, Nina S. U. King. So we encourage everybody to please get your village stickers. And thank you to Nina for the beautiful drawing that she put on our village stickers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
All right, if you move to village attorney.
Did you say that they can be voted on May 5th? You buy it.
After the budget hearing, it will probably appear on the agenda for action to be taken. That's what's been done in the past.
Taken that day or next week?
If that's what the board chooses. Normally, after the hearing, after hearing, unless there's some situations why it won't be voted out, obviously, this is a direction the board may take. I'm not saying for sure that it will. I'm just letting the people know that there is a budget hearing on May 5th. Action may be taken to approve the budget at that meeting. I can't forecast what the board's wishes would be at that time. I'm just letting the people know it's a possibility.
So move to, uh...
I need to contact me, or Strasburg.
Uh, I think it was Ms. Hayes. Let me see. Well, actually, she was working with me. Uh, if you could just kind of like contact me and let me know what your availability is unless you'd rather I just tamper call you. Because nothing's confirmed.
Do you give me how many students?
It's 150 students. They're going to try to do it at 75, 75. I told them 150 was entirely too many at one time for either of those departments. They're trying to do it in one day and then I thought maybe we should try to do it in two different days. I, I realize that's a lot. So to government day, we usually do 20. And that's very complicated at some point. But that's why I'm asking you now to try to prepare for that. Maybe we have to do more than one day.
A whole day of that, or?
No, no, they're going to start at 9:30 in the morning. They're going to conclude around 12:30. And again, we're going to break it down. It was, they wanted to do it all in one day and I told them that problem wasn't feasible. They're going to be walking from Strasburg to the police department and to the fire department. And so that's why we decided two days might be better. But at this point, I'm thinking it may even have to be more than that. So if you'd like to comment, we can go over it. Because I don't have her name with me, but I do know that I told her I would get back to her. Thank you.
All right, village attorney, attorney of the graphic. Village engineer, Mr. Jim Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just totaled the unit prices for G8 paving and came up with the following bid total. And in addition, just to give you an update on the water treatment plant project. Water treatment plant one, which as well as one and two, the face piping and filter building is being finished up. Once finished, filters and strippers will be tested, brought online once the IEP signs off on the operating permit. There's some minor electrical work to be finished. The generator is installed, boat tested. The generator will run everything now if there is a power outage. Filter building roof and the new skylights have been installed, as well as the new skylights on the wellhouse building. All interior painting in both buildings is complete. And the sub base for the driveway and the parking lot on the backside of the site is installed and the new pavement will be installed this month. And just so you know, the completion deadline for the project is the end of this month and they are on target to meet that. So everything's looking very good. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Move to reports of trustees and board committees, Parks and Recreation Committee trustee Haskin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to report that Public Works has concluded painting the inside of the community center and has started part of the gym, but that's been put on suspension for a while until they get some more inside work time. We have a new stove. The new microwave has been installed. It is up and working. And our next meeting will be May 7th at 6 o'clock at Community Center. And that is my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee. Beuvication committee. I hear the Beuvication Committee associated community clean sweep the 16th and 18th, 2015, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM behind the village hall. We will be targeting public buildings and village access roadways for the anti-litter attack. 2015 Hootsie Awards have been ordered and are in. And will be, the Beuvication Committee will be judging homes and businesses in July. And war group, sorry, will be presented in August. This year, the committee is planning on giving out 125 awards. Focus at the beginning of spring has to, was to unclutter the landscaping at the police department. Big thank you to the Public Works Department in completing, helping complete this project. The committee meetings are held on the third Wednesday of the month. The next meeting will be May 20th at 7:00 PM at the village hall. Everything too is the Beuvication Committee is sending out thank you notes to our businesses that are cleaning up. So I think there's been two businesses. Marathon did cleanup and Home Town Bureau did cleanup. So we'll be keeping an eye on businesses and sending out thank you notes to them. So that's my report. Move to ordinance review committee, trustee Myers.
Your report.
With the air governmental relations committee, trustee Burgess.
Thank you, Mayor. In the governmental, we'll meet the first Thursday of the, of May, May 7th here at village hall at 7:00 o'clock. That's all that I have.
Thank you, trustee. Move the neighborhood watch committee, trustee Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to make an announcement tonight that we are ending two of our campaigns. One, no bullying. And the other one, no texting while driving. We're going to try to include those campaigns at the end of the school year by June. We've been talking to the superintendents in regards to getting those final pledges that students have filled out with the no bullying campaign, as well as the no texting by driving on the streets in South Village, by not only the school board, but also library personnel and just the residents of South Village. We are, of course, continuing our out of the neighborhood campaign, but we encourage all of the residents to turn your front and your back porch lights every night. We are also looking for new block club captains with school coming to an end in approximately 30 days. We're going to have a lot of activity on the streets. School will be out. So therefore, we're looking for new block club captains. I'm also excited to announce tonight that we are in the beginning stages of our junior neighborhood watch committee. Our committee is meeting with some of the officials of the school board. We're going to have a junior neighborhood watch over the summer months to give our youth something to do as well as to help them take pride in the community. So if you know any young people on your block that's particularly in middle school or high school, you can let them know that we have our next neighborhood watch meeting on the second Monday in May, which is going to be May 11th. And they can come to that meeting and they can get signed up and we'll let them know what the criteria to help with that program would be for the summer. Also, at our meeting in May, deputy chief, are we still open the concealed carry?
No, we're, 20...
May 11th?
Oh, I'm sorry, May 11th.
I have a lot of residents that have already called me. They are very excited about that. They want to come.
Yeah, I think about 15, is it? Just make sure you give me the correct background because there's handles.
Is there a cost that night?
I'm sorry?
Is there a cost?
No, no, no.
Okay. Because they think it's a concealed carry class where it's going to be a cost of...
No, 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 it's not a concealed carry class.
It's just information about it?
It was to answer, you said that they had some questions about when you could get a letter from the chief when you didn't, regardless of the law. But it is not, I have not certified the charge.
Okay. We'll take that for now. So if you want to know about concealed carry, make sure that you come to our neighborhood watch meeting on May 11th so that you can get more information about it. And we'll let you know more about the upcoming class and that date is pending. And that concludes my report. Now, what we're doing at this point, trustee Burgess, we are formulating some kind of criteria to give the youth something to do at that regular meeting that we have at 7:00 o'clock. All of that's going to happen during the meeting. If you know anybody that want to be a part of the junior neighborhood watch, or if you want to get some information to people that may know, just send them to our meeting and there we're going to let them know what they're going to be doing.
I was going to ask you, you're talking about the 7th, of the 7th grade.
Yes.
And 7th grade.
And high school.
And 7th grade.
They're big there with their parents, yeah.
Oh, did you say?
Yes. They don't want them coming alone.
No.
Public Relations and Community Outreach Partnership Committees, trustee Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to announce that student government day was our last board meeting and it was a great success. The children were great. And thank you to all of our employees and our volunteers who helped us make that day happen. Thank you to our sponsors as well. And this being the 40th anniversary, we are very excited to host the dinner for the first time since 2009. And it is with great sadness that I have to report that the dinner has been canceled due to lack of participation. We had less than half of our department heads and our elected officials, RSPPs, whether or not they were coming. And we only had three students RSVP that they would be attending. So we didn't have the numbers to give the character preparer. And we had had a certain amount of people there. So it's really unfortunate that that had to happen. Each of the students, they received two complimentary tickets. But her, Mrs. O'Hare, who was the teacher, English teacher, was very instrumental in helping us. She actually helped by calling all the parents and really kind of encouraging. And they just said the cost was a factor, so they were not going to be coming. So we really, we hope that maybe next year, we are going to keep the money. We're going to save for the first of the government day. And we're hoping that maybe next year, we can have a 41st celebration dinner and maybe we can have some more participation. But thank you again with everybody who did help and everybody who did come out. The meeting ran very smoothly. They were very happy and we had a good round of kids. So thank you very much. And for the community outreach partnership, I have to report that...
Thank you, trustee. Move to report to departments, committees, commissions. Fire department, 911 commission, chief Strasser.
Thank you, Mayor. More of a short report. Over the past five weeks, fire, fire department responded to 41 calls. Nine vehicle accidents, eight firearms, six medical assists, two stove fires, a vehicle fire, high brush fire... high brush fires, light pole, child lock in the car, and assist with three other agencies.
Thank you, Chief. Please firm it. Deputy Chief Silver.
Thank you. I went back to April fourteenth to April twenty-eighth. Our most police department assisted all their fire calls. In addition, we had seven hundred and twenty-two calls for service. Out of those calls, five juveniles were arrested, ultimately released to their parents. Eleven adults were transferred to the adult detention facilities. Seventeen adults were bonded out, sixty-one traffic tickets issued, twenty-five warning tickets issued. We held a prostitution sting, which resulted in the arrest of seven alleged prostitutes. Five cars towed and one felony heroin arrest. We have two profile cases right now. We have an arson case that we're working with State Fire Marshal and Fire Department for an abandoned household, Peterson. And we also have a aggravated battery from infant case that we're currently working on. We also are working in coalition with the Gang Task Force, which involves municipally, Stock Village, University Park, Cook County, Chicago Life and other local agencies. We're working like a combined task force that will be out for the next several weeks. My business is approximately six additional cars. They had a saturated patrol in some of our high targeted areas. On one of these evenings, they were able to retrieve two loaded handguns and sixty grams of cannabis resulting from a traffic stop. I wanna take this time to the Buickation Committee to say thank you. Absolutely amazing job at the police department and it's very much appreciated. And that concludes the report.
Thank you. Move to Finance Director, Mr. Turner.
Mayor and the board. As of March fifteenth, I have reported to the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, two concerts were awarded in the amount of twenty-five thousand and fifty thousand. The contract is not ended yet, it's gonna end as of next year, June thirtieth. So this is an intermittent report, this is the second report I have submitted. And we have billed administrative costs in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Even, we have gotten all the administrative fee from a monitored bank that was deposited into Pushman Trust Bank, General Fund account. The third one is the current year, I mean, the audit for two thousand fourteen and fifteen is going to start pretty soon. The auditors will be here in the first or second week of May to start with. Hopefully, that should be completed as soon as possible before the deadline of the state controllers, that is, six months. Hopefully, all the reporting will be completed by the end of six months. That ends my report.
Thank you. Move to Social Security Agency Director Art Johnson.
Mayor, Mayor and Board. In the five-week span, so that's in this time, the forty-seven calls. Seven vehicle accidents, eight firearms, fifteen school patrols, three seal alarms, two stove fires, five brush fires, two assist other agencies, one child locked in a vehicle, one light pole on fire, one disabled vehicle, one shed fire, and one car fire. And also like to announce that the Cook County has a mitigation plan that's just that we've submitted. As they approved us and adopted it, so we're going from September twenty-sixth of two thousand fourteen. It expires September twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, only after go through our schedule again. And that gives us any opportunity for hazardous mitigation grants, the full complement of funding available.
Thank you, sir. Move to Human Relations Commission, Commissioner Shrinkis.
Sir, am I going there?
You're done.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On April twenty-third, the human relation met at First Baptist Church, the University Park. And we were there with some old people from all over Illinois. Well, we met and had a good time. We discussed race, the verse of the Nillers and things like that. And we also told them that if we could possibly do the same thing here, two thousand sixteen, April twenty-third. We also is looking for new members to join the committee, but it's one thing we're trying to do this time. Is we wanna bring the village together in July. We're planning to have a potluck down over at the community, at the senior center. And we invited everybody here to come and participate in this. We're trying to do things to get the people to understand that human relations is a group of people that get together to try to work. And if you have problems, you can come to us and we'll come to you. And that's what we're talking about. So thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, I also have a motion to approve the Human Relations Commission appointment. I have a, it's Tanya West. Ask for a motion to approve.
So, Tanya?
Got motion in second. Any question or comments? Here you now go, short please, call roll.
Burgess?
Yes.
Morton?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Haskin?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Motion carries. I asked Miss West if you would keep them forward.
I am the captain of the Captain in the voice To the office of Human Relations Commissioner In the village of Stock Village In the county of Cook and Will Of Horset Who's always where That I will support The Constitution Of the United States The Constitution Of the state of Illinois And I will thank you this chair For the best of my ability.
As we say, tonight you were sworn in, tomorrow you'll be sworn in. I need to refresh my memory. Does that bring us back up to full count? Any Human Relations Commission? Thank you very much. All right, move to Housing Commission, Commissioner Gary Hope.
How, Commissioner, we, this version of the government, yeah, here in the village hall.
Commissioner. Move time number six, consent agenda. Does anyone have any?
Actually, I have a report for you.
What do you?
I do not see your name.
I didn't see your name, so I didn't mark it up. Let's go to Senior Committee, sorry about that.
That's okay, I just wanted to see your name.
Senior Committee, who will pass off the vote for Chairperson, please, send your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reminder to sign up for the Monday, May eleventh movie Ghostbuster, American Cancer Speaker at eleven-thirty A M. Blood pressure screening, pizza party lunch at twelve P M. With movie at twelve-thirty at the McConaughey Public Library. Call seven-five-seven-four-seven-seven-one. Lunch is provided by the library. President Obama signed a mandate for Medicare to use an I D. number instead of S. social security number within the next four years. The cost for the change will be three hundred and twenty million dollars. I hope that's title. Blood pressure screening, Monday, May fourth, one to two P M. in the senior center office. Silver sneaker continues every Tuesday morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that ends my report.
Thank you very much. I'll pass the title also. All right, consent agenda, does anyone have any, they removed? None? That's motion to approve the consent agenda as is?
No.
And motion is their second. Go short, please, call roll.
Burgess?
Yes.
Morton?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Haskin?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Motion carries. Move time number seven, new business, A, motion to approve accounts payable and disbursements for April fifteenth, two thousand fifteen through April twenty eighth, two thousand fifteen. Is there a motion to approve? And motion is their second. Any questions or comments?
Question.
Trustee Burgess.
Yes, Mohan. Usually you send us, you give us a balance of where, where we're at right now. Need to get one this time. I'm just, I'm looking at, you're paying all of the immediate things, if you pay the credit cards. Do we have money for that or is that?
We do have money. I apologize, it's my mistake. I did not do this on time. We do have money, we have money to pay all this. Certainly, I say some of the money for the upcoming payroll on May first. Some of it is my mistake, I did not report.
The bottom, the last entry on the first page, credit card payment, you have thirty-two ninety-eight. I add the two that you have here. Okay, I gotta see the third.
Yeah.
Okay, no, I didn't see the last page. I didn't see there was something on the back of the paper. I apologize. I know we're gonna ask you about the map, but I see now that it's on the very last page. That's all.
Anything else? Got motion in second. Go short, please, call roll.
Burgess?
Yes.
Morton?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Haskin?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Have a motion to approve committee meeting minutes for March third, two thousand fifteen. Is there a motion to approve? Motion in second. Any question or comments? Here you now go, short please, call roll.
Burgess?
Yes.
Morton?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Haskin?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
All right, we got a motion to approve and release executive session minutes for March third, two thousand fifteen. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Motion in second. Any question or comments? Here. Committee meeting, March third, this is the executive session.
Okay, what was the, what was the word that was just ordered out before that?
Committee meeting.
Okay, now we're, that's already been, I won't want to use executive session in some fashion. Okay, I'm sorry to make sure I heard.
Got motion in second. No question or comments? Go short, please, call roll.
Burgess?
Yes.
Morton?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Haskin?
Yes.
Williams?
Motion carries. Motion to release executive session minutes for January seventh, two thousand fifteen.
I didn't hear the, that's why I'm asking. That's cuz he asked me a question while the ball is being taken. I just wanna make sure that I heard the motion in second. I thought, March third, committee and March third, executive session. He asked me a question while I was asking, so I just wanna make sure. So sorry, trustee Washington, you ready?
You ready? All right. Motion to release executive session minutes for January seventh, two thousand fifteen. Is there a motion to approve? Yeah, motion is their second. Any questions or comments? Here you now go, short please, call roll.
Burgess?
Yes.
Morton?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Haskin?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Motion carries. Motion to release executive session minutes for January twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen. Is there a motion to approve? Yeah, motion in second. Any question or comments? Here you now go, short please, call roll.
Burgess?
Yes.
Morton?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Haskin?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Motion carries. Motion to release executive session minutes for February third, two thousand fifteen. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Yeah, motion in second. Any question or comments? Here you now go, short please, call roll.
Burgess?
Yes.
Morton?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Haskin?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion to release the executive session minutes for February seventeenth, two thousand fifteen. Is there a motion to approve? Yeah, motion in second. Any question or comments? Here you now go, short please, call roll.
Burgess?
Yes.
Morton?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Haskin?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Motion carries. Motion to approve termination agreement with the element of eternal order of police, labor council and the village of Stock Village, tough communicators and agree to a tentative agreement for the effective employees. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Got motion is their second?
Second.
Got motion in second. Any questions or comments?
Questions?
Trustee.
When are the negotiations, I'm gonna ask the question, are you really trying to get them? There are five of them that I think need to be saved for clarification when that happens later. When are negotiations with the T C Os? I don't need an exact date.
First communications is our last year.
Right. Um, did they have union representation at all meetings?
Yes.
When were the T C Os asked to give a proposal to cut the money and to meet or renew a proposed number?
First meeting.
First meeting, which happened three months ago.
No, pre-communication or scheduling.
Okay, so the first meeting would have been?
For that, next two months.
Next two months, okay. Um, when were we notified that the union could not meet, could not lower their budget? When were, not the board, but when were the people who were involved in the negotiation? When were you, when did you receive information that they could not come to this number?
My second meeting, um, there were representative, I think, they were then. And then for you, that was all we had a moment ago. I said that we couldn't have reduced the labor cost that we needed to, to meet the savings. From the, the, the centers. And that didn't count the equipment operating that is mandated based on the texting federal mandate and also electric workers updated. It's not even close to being paid for. And within the next two years, you're gonna develop a completely new system for, you work from one point five to two A D L.
All right, so the initial negotiations, our normal contract year adds to April thirtieth. So the initial negotiations began around three months ago. Your first meeting, you said was around two months ago. There was union representation at all meetings that you had. The T C Os were asked to give a proposal to cut a cer, to a certain number. And we were notified at the second meeting that they could not do that. And then when did the attorneys who conduct all of our union, and with all of our union negotiations, always have conducted our union negotiations, when did the attorneys initiate to not renew the contract? When did that letter go out?
And the, when, the date of the letter giving notice?
Yes.
Was it in the state, the state of the bar agreement?
Yes.
That the contract was gonna be terminated? You all happy of it?
I wanna say it's April thirteenth. The thirteenth, okay. So, three months before the contract was to either be terminated or renewed. We began reaching out. Two months after that, or a month after that, we actually set up a meeting, discussed the need to cut the, cut the number due to budget concerns. The union had time to kind of look at that, come back with a number that didn't happen. They said they couldn't, they couldn't lower their cost and then per the contract, it was very bad both sides to terminate the contract and to not renew.
The, the last proposal we got from the union was a wage freeze, which had situated any type of deduction.
And here you.
The last proposal we got from the union was a wage freeze. We did not get any type of cost savings, initiative, cost savings from, from the union. And which based on the executive session minutes that you just got approved. All this information had been discussed thoroughly with every member of the board in the executive session. Financials have been exchanged. Everyone has an agreement to go this route.
I don't deny that. I think that one of the residents asked a question, but I, I think that these questions were probably more geared to what she wanted to know. And she, the way she answered the question, she got an answer that did not answer these questions. So I just wanted to make it clear, because we haven't said it out here, that this is something that the board has discussed, that this is something that has been reviewed, that this is something that has gone back and forth in the contract negotiation as per all other contract negotiations. And when it was brought to the table that the union could not make a certain price, then it was brought to the board and it was discussed to take action. I've heard that this, that these statements are not true. I've heard that these things have happened. So I wanted to head and send an open board meeting by our council and have any trustee up here dispute it because it's been out there that these because it's been out there that these things haven't happened. And if they are wrong, if there's anybody who can say as part of the TCO union that none of these things happened, I would urge them to contact the board as soon as possible, as I've stated before, because we're hearing different sides. So, that's why it needs to be said out loud in a board meeting, and I think that everything needs to be said out loud in a board meeting. So, if anybody thinks that that didn't happen, it needs to be brought up, because I've got, I've got questions. And based on what I've been told, all of these things have happened, the letter went out, everyone was notified. So, based on that.
Also, just to address what the, uh, one of the residents asked about, there has been nothing entered into, no written agreement with any outside dispatch center. That's why it's, it's, that's been discussed. The board was invited to view all of their locations. Board members have been looking at their, uh, their proposals, their locations over the last six weeks. That's also been discussed. And they came in last Tuesday, not as a ruse or a show, but to make a genuine proposal, to give information to the board and the residents. And I think all three should be commended on their presentations. But to reiterate, there is no written agreement, there's been nothing signed. Thank you.
Burgess.
No.
Morton.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Haskin.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
I make a motion that we go with Kurt's dispatch center for our new dispatch center. Yeah, motion for Kurt's, hold on a second. Is there, is that for a second? All right, so as for motion to approve a contract with dispatch service, to provide dispatch service to the Village of Saw Village?
Sorry, you said what?
I didn't mean it is.
No, that's what I'm asking, what are you asking for?
Motion to approve a contract with dispatch service to provide dispatch service to the Village of Saw Village?
Okay, can we go, can we, uh, add that we accept the contract central?
Motion for central, there in second. All right, motion dies. As for, as for a motion to go into executive session.
Oh, come on!
And motion in second.
To clarify, you have a motion on the floor of item eight. Okay, turn it off. To call for executive session, is that what you're asking for?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, under what heading?
A violation of our main motion.
Under what heading?
There's a motion, there's a second.
Mr. Mayor, just two minutes, just two seconds, go into executive session.
I thought I heard, say yes. Matters of defending litigation, collective bargaining, matters real estate, employment and compensation.
Now, I'm asking you, is this gonna be personnel?
Talking, I got discussion of personnel matters, updating litigation, collective bargaining, matters real estate, employment, compensation. Yeah, motion in second. Any other question or comments? Vote true, please call roll.
Burgess.
I still ask the question, I, I know your name, five. I'm asking you, what does this pertain to? Does this pertain to what? Does it pertain to personnel? Because it's not real estate, that's why I'm asking. And the lawyer's here, I'm asking, what is this heading going to be executive session for?
I can't get a head of the question.
I know what you said. I know what you, I'm asking the lawyer, because if it's not, then we can discuss it out here, that's what I'm asking.
Personnel is mentioned.
Okay, okay, can we just say it's personnel?
No, okay.
There's multiple things that are on the heading, and I totally understand that, but the trustee is asking which item we're talking about. This is involving personnel. We don't have time for playing these games. This contract ends at midnight on Thursday. So, if we even have to wait and have a discussion, which we already had, that's totally fine. There's motion, there's second, let's vote. We're gonna go with personnel. There's motion, there's second, please call roll.
Vote true, please call roll.
Burgess.
Under personnel, yes.
Morton.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Haskin.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
As for motion, we could be? Motion in second, vote true, please call roll.
Burgess.
Yes.
Morton.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Haskin.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries. Let's go back to item seven. I motion to approve a contract with dispatch service to provide dispatch service for the Village of Saw Village.
I make a motion that we trust Kurt as new dispatch center for Saw Village.
There's a motion on the floor, there's a second on the floor, any questions or comments? Here, now vote true, please call roll. And then as for, vote true, please call roll.
Burgess.
No.
Morton.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Haskin.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams.
No.
All right, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee.
I just wanted to, uh, make, make a, an observation. I left, you know, I just wanted to wait till after it was taken care of. But I still believe, we go out for bid, and we ask for just research, and we ask our village engineer, who's an expert of doing the work for the village as an engineer, to look over the bids and make sure that the bids are, first of all, conducive to what we need. And he uses his professional opinion to render a verdict to us and give us back a recommendation, because that's what we hired him for. We went out to bid for a dispatch center. And not one of our police, firemen, or anyone that's gonna be using the dispatchers were invited to any of the open houses or given input to the village and let, let them know that what they'll be working with and to ask questions at either one of those open houses that we went to, to, because I'm not qualified, and I don't know if anyone here on this board is qualified to do the logistics of the dispatch center. And that was one of the reasons why I thought we should have waited until we get our expert. We're paying our police chief, our fire chief, and Esther, who uses this dispatch. We're paying their money. For them not to be able to be involved, at least to give us some type of heads up or professional opinion, I thought that was, that, that wasn't, it wasn't right. But we went ahead. Yes, I know that we had to, and we had to go and get rid of the dispatches because of financial. I've always been involved in making sure that we spend the money wisely. But we have people that we have here employed that are professionals. And I think we should use their opinion also, and their opinion should have been included in the determination of which unit we went with.
All right, any trustee? Who's that number J? Motion to approve an amendment to the employment contract to J.W. Farron, is there a motion to approve? Motion in second. Yeah, motion in second, any questions or comments?
Question again.
Trustee Burgess.
As I stated before, you said that you, you, you read it off as an, as an amendment. And I told you, and I, we discussed this, and it may sound redundant. An amendment means that there was an agreement made. There was never a voted on agreement made for his compensation. There was an agreement made, and the board voted on the appointment by yourself for this gentleman as village administrator slash public officer. But it was never his contract, money wise, was never agreed upon with this board's approval. So, to say amendment, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McGrath, to say an amendment means that it was voted on and it was never voted on. Because I've always stated, I wanted to see the money, and I even asked you at the last meeting, where the department has aware that they were paying X amount of money coming out of their budget for personnel towards this particular position. And you stated no.
Right. Any other questions or comments? Here, now vote true, please call roll.
Burgess.
No.
Morton.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Haskin.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries. As for the table, the boundary agreement with Crete, as for motion to table. Yeah, motion, yeah, second, any questions or comments? Here, now vote true, please call roll.
Burgess.
Yes.
Morton.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Haskin.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Move on to Ms. Lanes' comments from the mayor, trustee, is there a trustee here? Trustee Burris? Trustee Morton? Trustee Haskin? Trustee Washington?
First of all, I just wanted to congratulate Ms. Latanya West, is she still here? On your, yes, she is, yes, she is, people know what you're doing. I wanna congratulate you, Ms. West, on your, um, appointment tonight by the mayor to the Human Relations Commission. As a commissioner, only Human Relations Commission, and for access to all commissioners in the audience, if you wanna raise your hand, all the commissioners that are here. One, two, three. We welcome you to our commission, and if you don't know, we meet the first Monday of every month, right here at the Village Hall at seven o'clock. Human Relations Commission is a great commission to be on, and welcome. Also, I just wanna remind everybody about our Junior Neighborhood Watch Committee. If you know any young people on your block that's in junior high or high school that you think would be good for our Junior Neighborhood Watch, remind them about our meeting the second Monday in, uh, May. Thank you.
Any trustee, who's a trustee carries?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, I just wanted to read a letter that was in all of the trustees' boxes today, uh, but it's dated, uh, April 20th, and it's not signed, but it's, uh, has a sincerely yours, Illinois FOP, which is the criminal police lodge number two thirty-four. It says, "To the residents of Saw Village, the honorable mayor David Hanks."
Trustee Burgess, I don't want to interrupt, but I would recommend that that not be stated based upon what we talked about in executive session and threatened or pending litigation.
Um, all due respect, uh, Mr. Attorney, if they, if they didn't want it to be, why would they put it in everybody's? All the trustees received the copy.
Trustee, as you know, as we talked about, we don't even know who put it there. We don't know who actually issued it, and that coupled with some other items that we talked about. My recommendation, this is a recommendation from the village attorney, uh, for you not to read that based upon government pending litigation.
This is, okay, I did read this letter myself before, um, when I got it. And I, it just, it's basically a vote of low confidence. And I think the departments or the, uh, employees have the right to do that. And they feel that they're not being adhered to, or that they feel that they're being put out there on front street with no representation. I would think that they would need, I mean, I would think that the people of the village would need to know that. I mean, this is something that, these, this is the people of the village. Now, for not to, I mean, why would they, if they wanted to, if you thought that they should not give it to us, then you should, somebody should have said something at the beginning. But for me, not to read this means, and I got this, means that I'm holding back information that I think the village residents who put us in here should know. There's nothing here threatening, it's just basically a statement that they're making about this board and about this village administration. And, uh, you know, I'm sorry that it happened, but it did happen. And the reason why I'm saying, if you say we shouldn't, this was done from three, four years ago when Lewis Towers was mayor. And it was read at that time, a vote of low confidence at that time from the police department. And there was nothing said at that time that we shouldn't read that letter. And it was read at the village board meeting. I'm sure trustee was there.
I, I was there also, you were there.
Right.
That, that vote of low confidence, as we discussed, was signed by individuals. This is an unsigned letter reportedly from the FOP, based upon the other information that I advised you. Again, that's my advice. You don't have to follow it, uh, but if you jeopardize, uh, the village's legal position, that will have to come out at a later date, is all I'm saying.
Okay, I'll tell you what I will do. I'll tell you what I will do. Since, since you think it's illegal, because I don't see it being illegal. I, I don't see that, but, okay, we pay you just like we pay everyone else for, uh, our legal advice. I'll adhere to your legal advice, but I will tell you this, I will read it at my town hall meeting. And if anyone wants to stay after, they have a, they can come and look at the letter. Since you say that doing an open board meeting is illegal, I don't see the difference in, no, you said no one signed it. Someone did, um, it did, it is from the FOP, but just like you said, it's, it's not signed, but it is typed out from the Illinois Department of Police, so I will, uh...
I, I would just like to say that I can understand trustee Burgess's frustration, since he wants the residents to, um, have the letter. I just want you to rest assured, because the residents have the letter. I'm looking at them reading it, so you don't need to read it, because it's already been given to them. And the very first title on there says, "To mayor, board of trustees and residents."
Yep.
So, whoever wrote it, if it wasn't the FOP, the FOP should probably look into who's creating your mail. Because if you, you didn't sign it, and it's not something you want, you should look into that, because somebody's copying you. You should definitely look at identity that, because somebody's writing the letter saying that they're from you. Every other vote of low confidence we've had has been signed. This one hasn't. So, if somebody's out there acting like they're part of the FOP, you should probably look into that, because if somebody was signing things on my name, I'd look into it. But trustee Burgess, rest assured, they already had it. They already had it. It's already on Facebook. You don't need to be the voice people.
Okay, well, what I will do is this, and I'm gonna tell the residents, I myself would find out from the FOP. Lodge number two thirty-four. Oh, okay, was it after the meeting, sir? Um, I will, I mean, if, if you feel, yeah, okay. Did you, excuse me. Sir, did you put this letter out?
If I may speak in order, I will mention the question.
You have to go to the man.
It was put out by, by the FOP Labor Council, brought by the lodge. I can testify honestly that it was voted on by a majority of the lodge members and group. So, it was then put out by your local lodge, it was absolutely genuine.
Okay. Based on that, can we talk about executive session? I think that...
Okay. Dear residents, mayor Hanks and board members, this letter, this letter comes to you out of unfortunate but regrettable necessity of a vote of no confidence against mayor David Hanks. The vote was taken by, and this letter is submitted on behalf of the Illinois Fraternal Order for Police, lodge number two thirty-four, the employees represented thereby, the patrol officers and sergeants of the village of Saw Village. As you are aware, this community continues to work toward recovery from the damage sustained under the previous administration headed by mayor Lewis Towers. And the financial deficiencies this community faces, your police department has all, also strived to recover from the mismanagement of the prior administration while at the same time keeping all of you safe. In doing so, the police department has reached a level of professionalism and accountability which, despite past setbacks, extends beyond what has ever accomplished in previous interactions of this department. You are also likely aware that mayor David Hanks and the current board of trustees have made proposals and voted on ordinances which adversely affect the police department and more importantly, the residents of Saw Village. The Fraternal Order of Police, lodge number two thirty-four, has grave concerns regarding these proposals and questions whether mayor Hanks or the board of trustees have fully evaluated the consequences of these decisions. Quite frankly, mayor Hanks appears to have adopted a pattern of... Quite, quite frankly, Mayor Hanks appears to have adopted a pattern of behavior that mimics that of Louis Towers, including immoralizing and alienating the police department while creating an environment that encourages lawsuits by both residents and employees of Saw Village. The Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge Number Two Thirty Four, submits the following facts in support of these statements. Number one, Mayor Hanks is attempting, attempting to eliminate Saw Village dispatch, presumably under the guise of cost cutting. Mayor Hanks has absolutely no attempt to speak with any individual of the Saw Village Police Department in order to gauge the impact of this decision or its effectiveness in reducing financial constraints. He has ignored repeated requests to provide financial figures from his chosen contractor, Kurt's Andalas, and refused to allow the dispatcher's FOP lodge to submit a competitive bid. These choices will negatively impact the village's finance and cause the removal of officers from the street for extended periods of time. Number two, Mayor Hanks and the board of trustees currently employ the law firm, the law firm of Olson and Sturt as their counsel. The employees of the Saw Village Police Department overwhelmingly questioned Olson and Sturt's loyalty to the village, whether Olson and Sturt is a good fit for the Saw Village, or perhaps, or perhaps whether another firm should be retained. How long can a community of this size support an annual legal bill of approximately $700,000? Number three, David Hanks spearheaded an ordinance that created a position of public safety director. This position is to be filled by J.W. Farron, a candidate provided to him by Olson and Sturt. His contract also provides for a part-time administrator assistant at $27,600 annually, a $500 monthly cash card allowance, and $26,606.67 service package or golden parachute. The village, given the village's dire financial condition, where are these funds to be obtained? Mayor Hanks has also proposed to hire a part-time officer. The applications received from these positions, which to our knowledge, has not been advertised, come from very questionable candidates. If hired, these officers would be bound to a Fraternal Order for Police Lodge Number Two Thirty Four contract, and it has been indicated that contract would be ignored. Number four, employees who have filed complaints, lawsuits, or are union representatives have been targeted for termination or retaliation by Mayor Hanks. Likewise, it is clear that hiring part-time officers is an attempt by the village to eliminate its full-time officers via attrition. Number five, the Saw Village Police Department has been awarded several grants for equipment and supplies, many dating back over three years. The village failed to inform the police department about receipt of these grants, and little, and little or none of these grants were actually spent on equipment or supplies. Where did this money go? Due to the above, it is with regret that the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge Number Two Thirty Four, and its employees elect to file a vote of no confidence against Mayor David Hanks and the board of trustees. Sincerely yours, Illinois FOP Lodge Number Two Thirty Four. I just wanted to say one thing in here about the lawyers. I think it was four years ago, when it was a discrepancy, and, um, the previous administration was getting rid of the law firm that we have now, and it was asked to leave the dais. Mr. McGrath does remember that I asked him to stay right here, have a chair right next to me, and I defended him the whole time. So I just wanted to put that on, on record, yes, I did, because at that, at that time, the administration wanted another law firm, and Olson and Sturt prevailed. I just want to make that footnote. Thank you.
Any trustees, since you took your time to read that, I'd ask the board for authorization to sue the FOP. Mr. Stotter? As for, um, consensus, move forward.
Can you make a comment? Here, dispatch of a vote, a vote?
Any consensus? Move forward. Yeah, two? Right, I got consensus, move forward.
But can I ask, this is a, uh, actual meeting, and I know that this is going to be pending litigation, I understand. But I ask, I would like to have this discussed in the next executive session. I know that we did discuss parts of this in executive session. Who can't hear me? I'll talk louder. I know that we discussed this in executive session, parts of this earlier, so I would like to have this on executive session to exactly, to let everybody of in this board know why we're doing this. And I'd like to have this voted on in public when this proceeds. Because I, I think we were all warned by the attorney that because of what we discussed in executive session, why we shouldn't have brought this. I thought I tried to present this by saying that every person out here already had a copy, but since we went so far, because you had two copies, and one of them was not timestamped, which means you had an original copy, you felt the need to proceed with this, that's awesome. However, this was a violation of what we were sitting back there, so that's why this is happening. So I would just like to make sure, that we make sure that everything we do by this has our eyes on it and our t's crossed. Because I want everybody to know, by doing this, this has just caused a subsequent war. So everybody out here who's all on Facebook, you guys, your fingers, you guys, your fingers tonight, because I'm sure this is all you're going to be talking about. And I want to just make sure that everybody knows that definitely guys we charge. Not, don't think about, I know, I know race is the biggest topic that we all like to talk about, so this has nothing to do with black and white. I'm talking about the fact that each administration and our top department, our department that takes the biggest portion of our budget, our department that takes care of our citizens, what this just did, continued the divide. That's what I'm saying. And that was the basis of the emergency, so if anybody would like to look that up. So, what I'm saying is, we need to make sure that when this proceeds, that our eyes are on it, our t's are crossed, and we make sure that nothing else could damage any litigation that we have in the future. And that if it does, I would like the attorney to provide with the board, what that can do is one member of the board steps outside of the board's consensus and chooses to be their own person at the board, because we make a vote. The vote, the board votes. Regardless of what happened, I didn't vote for Kurt tonight. I want a different company, but we're going with Kurt, because the board made a decision. That's the way you have to be. So once somebody makes a decision that's outside of what the board does, it affects everybody. So I'd like the attorney to give the rest of the board some information about that.
Uh, I, I want to, I want to say, uh, Mayor and, um, Mr. McGrath, you have the board here. Why do we have to take a consensus? Why would you pay a purge to the board right now to find out who wants to go forth with suing the, uh, FOP? You have the FOP representative here who said, who stated that he didn't do this. So by me, by me?
I testified to the authentic, you said a lot, and I remember a lot.
You don't have a lot?
I just testified that, that it is my knowledge that it was...
Trustee, is there anything else?
Okay, we, what I'm asking is this, instead of a consensus, can we take a vote that we go forth? If you're going to, if they want to go forth, if they put it on the record, not a consensus? Then why, then why, then how can you take a consensus? And then also, also, I want to, I want to clarify something. You stated that I got this ahead of time. Just like, you know, I, I, you know, whatever, you can say whatever you want to say. But I did get this at the same time you did. Why I got two in my box, I have no idea.
I see, you have, one was stamped, one was not.
One was, one was timestamped.
One that was not, and I have to, because I can such yourself.
And I, and you're absolutely right. Why if one was timestamped and the other one wasn't, I have no idea. Maybe you should look at the cameras and see what's going on. But all I'm saying, I'm saying this, I did get two, and that's what I, and that's what I said. Now, if you feel that I'm not telling the truth, let's take a polygraph. But all I'm, all I'm stating is, I asked to read this because everyone else has one, so that's all I want to do.